Thankless. Dear Select Board, thank you for your dedication to engaging in difficult work on behalf of the residents of Monson. It is often thankless and results in decisions that leave a share of the population dissatisfied. This is not a private message. I plan to read this into the public record at the upcoming. I left Thursday's public hearing and select board meeting with mixed emotions, both hardened by the feedback and questions asked by our community and shocked that the select board was considering overriding the will of the planning board, who are the elected officials with the mandate to propose ordinance language. Such a course of action overturns the democratic process and changes the community conversation from one of dispassionate public policy into a referendum on a specific project. It does so in unprecedented fashion at the last minute in conflict with procedure for notice, public input, and with little consideration for how confusing this will be to the public who will be asked to vote on the matter. Ahead of Thursday's meeting, I was prepared for a room full of adversarial community members who had been fed misinformation and rumors from a small group of individuals. Instead, I was encouraged by the discussion. Aside from a single individual's attempt to muddy the waters, the discussion that followed was full of great questions representing a wide range of perspectives. Some spoke to their personal support in how participating in community solar has reduced their electricity bills and improved their lives. Others asked questions about how the community benefits, how the electrical grid works, or what the difference is between community solar and utility scale or residential solar. All great questions from residents seeking information to inform their understanding of a topic that is novel and new to many. Aside from the contempt exhibited by a single individual, the discussion on Thursday was constructive and not at all adversarial. The discussion of community solar, in my project in particular, represented the bulk of the questions and commentary because it was of interest to the community. Residents are engaged, not opposed. The individual in opposition has claimed that we are requesting an exemption, that the ordinance should not apply to us. It's quite the opposite. We are asking not to be treated with exception in that the select board should follow the normal course and put the ordinance to a vote as written. Should the proposed ordinance pass, it will be enacted as the planning board envisioned. Should it fail, it should be sent back to the planning board to conduct an open process to gather specific feedback on what the public didn't like about the ordinance and would like to see changed. This should be done by soliciting actual feedback, not assumptions based on undefined inferences from what went unsaid during the public hearing. It's great that so many people attended the public hearing, but the role of voters who may participate on August eighth far exceeds those who attended. It would be inappropriate to overrule the planning board and preemptively ask them to change specific language. The select board should not change the process and single out a specific project in a prejudicial and possibly unlawful manner. The nature of opposition, as I've heard it to date, falls into two categories. General opposition to any solar anywhere, maybe as exhibited by the signs I saw here walking in, and specific opposition by a neighbor who does not want to see the abutting parcel developed in any manner. I do not believe that either of these opinions are widespread in our community. I have spoken with the neighbor who moved to town after the project had already begun construction and who intends to sell their property and move elsewhere. I have reached out on several occasions to work with them on a landscaping plan they would find amenable. Their response was that they are not so concerned about the visible impact, but don't want to live next to solar panels. They have also said that they'd rather live next to solar panels than a subdivision, both of which are allowable uses. In what scenario should a process of establishing appropriate land use be corrupted by a single individual who is not an office holder and has no specific concern other than wanting to control, wanting control over property they don't own? They are entitled to an. They are not entitled to co-opt the public process and block activity that is otherwise allowed. My development partners and I have been extremely patient, causing construction in good faith as the town worked its way through the ordinance process, even as the initial six-month window stretched into more than a year. We could have continued construction at any time and challenged the validity of the moratorium, forcing the town to decide whether it wanted to deny a resident their rights as a private property owner and defend that position in court. I love this town and we do not seek conflict. However, as a private property owner engaged in activities expressly allowed by the town throughout the development process, I'm prepared to defend those rights to the fullest extent of the law. The best path forward for the town is to respect the work of the planning board and the democratic process by presenting a single warrant article in the language of the proposed solar ordinance as written for an up or down vote on August eighth.
Thank you, Tara. All right, we'll move into our next agenda item, approval of warrant for the special town meeting on August eighth.
Similar to last week, I have two separate versions of the warrant, just in case, I guess, so up for discussion.
So we left it our last meeting, Jonathan had suggested we talk to the town attorney.
So when I spoke with him, he said that technically the ordinance doesn't have to go back to the planning board because they're an advisory to the select board. So you guys could also propose the second ordinance, I guess it would be. But he also said that if you have two ordinances on the same warrant, there is a chance that both of those ordinances could be enacted. So then that's kind of a situation we don't want to be in. And where it doesn't technically have to go back to the planning board, if it fails, you guys could post like right after, you guys could have a meeting right after that and post for a different select board meeting, I mean, special town meeting. So you could, we could move forward, but the solar moratorium does stay in effect if the article doesn't pass. So he did say that it doesn't change unless the ordinance passes, then obviously it would go to the ordinance, but it would stay in effect until November fifth when.
Do you have a copy of the warrant?
Yeah.
Language that you have?
Yep. For just the one or both of them.
Just one.
Just the one is that.
Can we make copies of this?
Yeah.
I think the idea behind putting forth two was to speed up the process. It sounds like, and my feeling leaving Thursday and, you know, as I thought about it over the weekend, my feeling is that we want to keep this clear and concise.
Yeah.
And easy for people to understand. I don't think there was ever an intent to co-opt the authority of the planning board, of the work that the planning board did. I think we were just thinking, based on the feedback that I've been getting, and it's why I came to you and said, you check with the lawyer.
Right.
And asked that question because I was getting that feedback from more than just one person, that there was, that there was a concern. So the idea that, that we would move forward with two was born out of that.
Right.
Like not wanting to put the process off even further and make it a year and a half, like two years before we have an ordinance in, in fact. I think we can read the language and see what we want to do.
I spent a lot of time thinking about this, listening as best I could to all perspectives, and I appreciate that. I, I felt the, the hearing for the particular proposed ordinance of the, the solar ordinance, it was for planning board ears because they were the folks that developed the proposed ordinance. And I didn't hear from the planning board during the meeting or after at our select work meeting other than the change to the language on three D about development in progress of, and I think James, you mentioned changing that language to just say it would also meet requirements of industrial projects.
Yeah, we took out the number.
Right.
Uh, and just a lot for industrial scale.
Right.
For that.
Right.
Specific criteria. We also, as a, as a add-on, I don't know if you knew that, we added as a clerical piece, section Q, which basically says that the ordinance goes into effect once approved. Because we, I don't think it's a contentious thing, every single ordinance we have, I believe, has that language. We just drop the ball on it, so we tack that on, a unilateral.
Okay, so, so other than those, those changes that were brought up actually that evening, that one change, I just felt that it was the planning board that is bringing this forth. And if they didn't have any other changes, I felt that, you know, we should honor that and go by their proposed ordinance for this. And I did have a couple of things I read through the proposed ordinance and the teacher and me just found some grammatical errors. So I'm sorry, but yeah.
I would encourage you to go through that, the teacher and you and fix the original language. I don't think that's, I don't think that was.
It's not substantive.
Well, this one might be, and it was under the definition of development in progress on page two. And it ends, it last line is agreement hasn't executed prior to June eighth, twenty twenty-three, comma, but.
Oh, I thought I fixed that in this.
The crystal copy we have.
Oh, you may not have the one I already edited, because I caught that, that was, I didn't even mention that, that was a grum. Now, we had really played with it, played with some different language for that.
All right.
And then editing it, I noticed that during the meeting, actually, and I made a note. The non-teacher.
All right, here's your other test. On H five, under required documents, decommission plan, third line, blah, 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 materials shall be recycled in the proper manner. Will all fees, it probably should be with all fees paid.
It probably should be.
Or by the developer.
Yeah, we can fix that.
Okay, all right, all right.
I'm the doc, I, I've never been good in.
It's gonna be a legal document, I just wanted to make sure. And I guess questions I had regarding the select board's duties on reviewing financial stability of the institution backing it. I guess we can talk later about what that encompasses for the select board.
Sure.
I'm not really sure.
You know, like that has to do with, in the same sense that, and I could be wrong, but my guess is in the discussion, in the same sense that if someone defaults on their taxes, it ultimately, it goes from the CEO who cites people for infractions to the.
Their son and it's really heartbreaking for me.
Planning board really doesn't have the legal action.
We don't have the authority to send people action, and so I think that that's the intention of that.
Okay.
And honestly, if I had to guess, I would say we may have stolen that section from another ordinance.
I can assume, right, and speaking of, I assume the attorney has read through all this and.
Yeah, multiple times, although they didn't catch two grim errors, you talked about.
Well, maybe they were editing for grammar, just for.
Maybe they go teacher's school.
Yeah.
And my last question, I'm sorry to drill you on this, so do you, I don't, I just have the copy that, from the public hearing, but that part on three D on the development and progress definition, what is the language that you did change it to?
Do you have that?
Do you have?
I can pull it up on my phone if you don't.
We just ended it at the day, right?
Yeah, it's, instead it says, projects that meet the definition of development and progress are permitted in the rural residential district, is what it says now.
Oh, okay.
And that, in, I think it also references the industrial scale.
Cause I.
That's in the section about industrial scale.
It's in this section, uh, yeah.
It's in the section about industrial, right, right.
So in essence, what it's doing is prior to that, the language had specific acreage, and this is just reverting to the acreage as defined by industrial scale solar and then applying it to any projects that meet that criteria as being in development progress.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Okay, yeah, cause when we talked, and I know you had, you recalled the way on emergency, but we couldn't stay for that select board meeting. The language that somebody recommended was development progress and meet requirements of industrial systems. And that kind of confused me as I looked at it again because I don't know how some, all those requirements could be met in terms of it would have to be in land zoned as industrial.
Right, and that was by adding that, I don't know, I talked to the lawyer about it and she seemed to be fine with the languages as far as holding water legally, that it essentially just creates that one subset of projects for which industrial scale solar, as we define it, can be developed outside of the industrial zone.
Okay.
But following the rules.
But following all the other rules.
All the other.
And any place it says industrial solar, you would have to substitute in.
Right.
Yeah, it's just that. Or, I mean, we took out the ten point eight five, that's weird. So this is that ten point eight five that was really confusing.
Yeah, yeah.
So we just took it out, instead of putting ten in, we just did their regulations of the.
It seemed like, and based on the conversation with the lawyer, that it seems to track that it is like,
Yeah.
referring back to an already existing section of the ordinance as opposed to creating a second separate, right?
Okay, that makes sense, that makes sense. I was just kind of confused when I looked back at that.
I don't know what I'm doing either, I just wanted to be super clear about that. I got someone else to stamp it with their approval, so.
The, the people that will have to defend it.
The people that'll have to defend it, so I, I hope that that's enough.
They did have S four behind their name, so.
Yeah, I did. Well, I think I did that. I don't think she uses that.
But they didn't spell.
This is a different lawyer, just for ultimate clarity, this is not gray because they shunted me to another woman, Mary, who's dealt with this stuff before.
They all have specialty orders, I'm sure, yeah. Okay, no, thank you so much for.
Oh, sure.
So anyway, that's, I guess I've said my piece.
Okay, well, I was originally, I did like the idea of having multiple options on the town board, just to streamline the whole process where it has, has gone for longer than it needed to. After thinking about it, you know, hearing what the lawyer has to say, speaking with some planning board members, I feel that if this article does not pass, I think we can work together to keep things moving forward as quickly as possible so as not to delay this.
I'm, I'm in the same, I started to say that before. That was where the idea of multiple ordinances came from, was to try to keep this process moving. And, and because ultimately we want, want an ordinance in place so that anybody that wants solar has a pathway to have, right?
So they're not emailing us with different questions.
And, and as long as we move through this process, and I, I, I think with the understanding that if it passes, it's enacted, if it fails, then it goes back. I mean, I think even though the lawyer indicated that we can, as a select board, we could make some changes and resubmit it, I think it makes sense that it would go back to the planning board. They've invested a lot of time, I, I know they want to invest a lot of time, you know, if that happens, but I don't feel like it has to.
I would not be comfortable making changes that, that.
Right, and, and so I think that it should go back to the planning board, and I think, I think with the feedback that we were, that was received at the, this hearing last week, I think with some, possibly some additional conversation, but I think we can move seamlessly forward. Whatever the result, efficient, or whatever the result is on the eighth. So I, I, I think in the interest of clarity, so that, like, it's a yes or no. A yes, I want the ordinance, no, I don't want the ordinance, and then you, there's four.
And after that, you guys can decide when your next meeting is. Hopefully it'll be September, I think, I think typically it's August twentieth, scheduled.
Um, okay.
We had, we, yeah, no, we have a couple of meetings.
Do you want to talk about Article eight?
I do, that was my other question. So Article eight is to see if the town shall approve the select board to spend up to forty thousand dollars out of the road improvement reserve for the maintenance and repair of the Elliottsville Road.
Yes, so the road committee has gone out and started. I guess how we kind of approached the Elliottsville Road was, where are our issues? Where are all of our emergency money going? And Elliottsville Road is one of those places. And in order to kind of stop spending all of our money on emergency repairs and just do maintenance and make the necessary repairs the right way to try to avoid some of the flood damage that has happened and kind of mitigate through that, and. So we went out and measured some ditching, inspected all the culverts on the Elliottsville Road, and it came out that like all but what, one or two of them.
Two culverts.
Two culverts are bad. So, um, what we were looking to, or what I came up with, and I've gone over this with the rest of the road for, for the most part. So now I have all this incorporated. Um, so we were using like DOT numbers to get like a, an estimate of like what it would be, so it would be for what we bought was forty-two hundred feet of ditching. Yeah, it's forty-two hundred feet of ditching, and then that would be replacing, I think all but four of the culverts, so we would have that would be replacing six eighteen-inch culverts, one twenty, and then seven cross culverts, but it would be, we'd need fourteen culverts actually, because two of them makes.
And I assume changing those culverts to all be the same size?
Uh, yes, so the driveway culverts will be eighteen inch and then the, all the cross.
Cause then you run into that problem, some of them are smaller, and so they can't handle the flow.
Yeah. Yes. Yeah, some of them are like fifteen-inch culverts, and we're gonna go all to eighteen on the driveways, and then all cross culverts be twenty-four inch. And then there's certain spots that on the other side of the road that we're not thinking of ditching, just like the end of the culvert needs to be cleaned out and the berm needs to be taken off the other side of the road as well, so that the water doesn't pool in the middle. And you can see on some of the edge where the ditching is bad enough that the road, the water has just made its own ditch right down the side of the road. And that's what we're trying to avoid. So with coming up with those numbers for replacing culverts and then the ditching, using like DOT rates and, but this is not including the labor for the culvert. So it's including the labor for ditching, but not the labor for culverts. It, it would come out to, if we did every single one, all fourteen culverts, it would be thirty-eight, nine, thirty-five. So if we take a couple culverts off of that, that would be the labor for putting the culverts in.
And you said there were several that were still okay.
There's two, that's okay. But there's some that we could make do with until we can get the rest of them replaced. And this is just such a small inventory of road, but like I said, it's where we're having the most problems and.
Repeated.
It repeatedly, and spending the majority of our maintenance and road repair money on that.
So is it from, I assume it's the upper part of the road towards the main road?
Yeah.
Down to.
It's like two culverts down and where it starts to get bad, the rest of the way down, the hell, the first couple culverts are.
And then down to, to Gully Brook, Gully, Gully Brook.
Uh, how far did you guys go on?
Yeah, cause that, cause it all goes down and that's where it kind of pays.
Kind of means, yeah. Yeah.
I know I have a vested in this.
I mean, this, this is a, my mind, this is a prop in the book here.
Yeah.
It's a first.
Yeah.
I don't know what we're supposed to discuss at this point.
I mean, once once we know if we can spend the money or not, I guess that's when we can start venturing out to figure out what exactly, that, that's just the ballpark idea of what really needs to be done in order to kind of mitigate some of these flood damage areas and not be replacing. The only downfall is there's going to be several cross culverts that we're replacing that were digging up pavement that we won't be able to repave in the immediate future.
Right, will that impact winter, I mean?
Probably.
Now, they, you can always refill, you know, as you, as you need.
As you, as you.
What's in, if you can't answer it, it's on, what's in the reserve now?
I was just gonna ask that.
There, this is a rough estimate, but it's like really close to one fifty-eight.
Could we, instead of forty, address enough to, to re, put S? I mean, I know Steve's patched some places before.
Well, the problem is, is like, it's, I wouldn't want to spend that much money out of the road reserve at once because every cross culvert is like nine thousand dollars to repave. So then, that's like seven of them, yeah, just to repave.
Yep, that's.
And I think we're kind of looking at this as, you know, there's been a lack of maintenance throughout the years on all the roads, all the ditches.
No, I know, it's just.
And this is fixing the, the worst of the problems.
Just to work our way down.
Just to work our way down and eventually hopefully get everything to a point where.
And if the culvert's working correctly, the fact that it doesn't have asphalt over it should mean that it's not washing in the same way, even though it's not.
Right.
And there's, there's some other things, like maybe full patch would help hold some of that gravel in there.
That's all I was thinking, if we could pull that, send the thing.
Yes. Yeah. We, we can figure out something, but as far as actually paving, repaving those areas, it's just not feasible to with the money that we have right now.
I mean, maybe I've misspoke, because that's what I was picking.
Yeah, I know.
The work, it's Steve's own work, he picked it up with the, the truck and, and repaired some areas. Like, there's an inexpensive way to, to do that without adding.
Hundred thousand dollars, I know, it, it's disappointing to say the least, because there's so much that needs, needs attention and
Yeah.
Unfortunately, we just have to start with the worst and work our way down on this.
Well, I feel like every time I go for, like I drive in where I notice something else.
Something else that you didn't notice before, but until you became, yeah, that, believe me.
I guess.
Even in other towns, I'm starting to notice that, man, they should really turn around that stop sign. It's terrible, absolutely terrible.
Um, Alina, on the driveway culverts, we talked previously about the ditching in the lower part of the driveway so that runs into the.
Yeah.
Will that be done?
Um, so within our limits, it will be done. So that doesn't give us very far back, but it does increase some of the drainage in some of the driveways. So, and hopefully in doing this, we can talk with some of them and they can kind of, some people already have the right idea.
Yeah.
It's just aware, there's one particular driveway that it is kind of ditched on the side, but where our ditching isn't right, the ditch is lower than the culvert, and so then it defeats purpose because then the water's not going where it needs to go. Maybe, maybe, I should have asked.
I recommend that.
Yeah.
And I, one thing we did discuss too is any money taken out of the reserve, we've got to come up with a game plan to get that put back in as soon as possible, plus more each year, so that gets built up.
Right.
You know, and like, and once we get everything kind of up to shape, you know, it'll just be a little drop in the bucket each year, just doing maintenance on all the roads to keep, keep them up.
No, I think it's easier to act.
And like, even when you.
Until it isn't.
Yeah, yeah, and that we're there until it isn't. And so then, like redoing the ditching right now, it's gonna be, it's gonna take them a lot longer because there's a lot more to do versus when they, if we get it on a rotation. If we get it on a rotation, it will be, they'll be able to come up there a lot quickly.
Okay.
So is the road committee gonna um kind of stay together to do maybe a long term plan?
I think so, I don't know where where.
As long as we have enough days in the week for meetings.
Yeah, really.
We have desired this for years.
Um you know.
We just couldn't get people.
I think it speaks to, I think it speaks to the engagement, and I think it speaks to when you ask experts for. Or people that have more knowledge or advice, they're hap- they're oftentimes happy to share it, you just have to admit that you don't know, and I'm.
Yeah. They, people love to tell you what to know. Well, that's.
Willing to do that, so, um I'm happy to accept the.
Yeah.
Advice, advice.
Sounds good.
I hear comments from the peanut yet.
Was there?
We're just agreeing, we we also don't know. We're all the same boat.
Um.
Aaron seems to know something, once in a while.
Alan, and this is one of the big reasons why I got on the select board was, you know, the upkeep of the town, you know, its facilities and everything. You know, and I've seen the neglect for years and years and years. You know, I think we get on the right path and.
Yeah.
It'll go a lot easier.
Right. Absolutely.
It does have a lot to do with our office folks too. Um so that if we're all okay on Article eight on this, and it's just then the the time of the meeting, because. Well, you both took any notes, I think a meeting before last. I put in my Google Calendar that we were gonna do town meeting at five and a select board meeting at six, because it's on our select board meeting day, but. It came out at six on here.
Well, I guess it's really up to you guys, because we can change the warrant to say what you want it to be.
No.
Oh.
No, no, go ahead.
I said the only thing about changing it in hind- in hindsight as I speak is five o'clock might be too early for a lot of working folks to get to meet.
Well, I was thinking that too.
And and the normal time is six o'clock, and they're, they, this is an in-person voting only, right?
Yeah. We confuse people.
Right.
Like it may be a a ballot, another, but but it's in person, there's no really voting, there's no, okay.
Right, right, correct. Yes. Right, right, right.
Um I, I mean, I think six o'clock makes sense, and we'll just.
We'll just end up.
Do we get a meeting later after, yeah.
Just after.
Okay.
Um.
Sounds good.
We'll just have a late night party together.
Hmm.
We have too many.
I know. We've got a lot accomplished though, so.
It's important. Alright, so um I have a motion to accept um. How do we, I turned this because we were, you proposed two different um words.
But this is the one.
That's, yeah, that's.
Put forward by the planning board.
Yeah, so, okay, with just the one ordinance on it.
Just.
I'll make a motion to accept the warrant um with Article two as proposed by the planning board. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay.
Seconded.
Seconded, any further discussion? All in favor? Alright, um we have Missalas next, and and is that including liquor license?
Yes, but I have a question about the liquor license, so, alright. Doesn't usually they bring us something to sign?
Um well, they probably will once they know it's approved, I, that would be my thought, um I don't know if.
Because usually how that happens is like with Tim.
Oh, right.
They would bring their liquor license to me to be on the agenda to sign, so I don't.
Is it different, cause it's a convenience?
Well, and that's what I was wondering.
Well, that and also this is a new one, I I've never been here when.
Well, theirs could be a new one too.
When it was new, did you approach?
Well, no, they just are going to, on our next one will be their name.
Oh, right, their their line one, yeah, okay, um.
Yeah.
So possibly, um I I suppose.
So I guess it's a matter of.
Are we giving, I mean, don't they have to apply with this thing, isn't it a state application and so?
Yeah, and then in the state application has a place where the.
Right, so we're giving approval for them to move forward, but we're not issuing them a, right, we're not issuing them a liquor license.
Okay. Right, right.
Right, right.
We're just saying, sure, go ahead.
That's, that's what it is, there's there's a, there's a uh an application, and you print the application out, and part of the things that you have to fill out is the signature of someone from the town saying.
And apply.
We're okay with you moving forward, and then the final, once you get all your ducks are over, you send it back to the state for their final approval.
When you were brand new with this, did you um br- bring your application after the public hearing?
No, because this is just a weird thing with small breweries, that our original liquor license, the one we have, you know, we started with, is actually called a manufacturer's license.
Oh.
And so it doesn't, and Brian brought this up, it, you know, like I would have to do a public hearing, I checked into it, they said because it's a manufacturer's license, it's a different.
Okay.
Right, okay. Um so probably wouldn't hurt to say move forward if that's what you guys are thinking.
Yeah. Right, and then they'll have to bring their application to you guys to be signed at a select board meeting when they get to that.
So I'll reach out to Val.
Tell her that.
Tell her to get the paperwork together and bring it to us.
Okay.
So you stick a vote in there, or are we just saying?
I don't think so, because, and usually what happens is usually they give us the paperwork, then we have the public hearing, and then you guys just sign it after the public hearing, so we kind of did things backwards.
This is always on petition.
Yeah, the petition, right.
So the petition, so that kind of made things go a little backwards, but.
Right.
I mean, maybe Val has it still, and she really just wants a.
I think. Maybe, maybe. So.
Just so you know, Val did indicate, uh only because I talked to her about it, she asked me the question, I think, is it Scott Robinson?
What it sounds? No, it's probably Jamie and Mark.
Mark, sorry, that's who it was, Mark is actually the one running with the paperwork, so she, cause I asked her, I said, do you have all of your paperwork, she said, no, Mark's doing all of it. Just.
Which makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So I would make a motion that we approve Robinson's to move forward in their application for their liquor license. If that makes sense.
I'll, I'll second. Any further discussion? No, all in favor? Okay, so we will see everybody on the eighth at six o'clock. Alright, um yeah, oh yeah.
Mine's.
I, mine is either.
I have the morning, uh let's just see, I'm sure we have the right one.
Please.
I think the right one is stable.
Well, I made, whenever I made a copy of, that's the only one I made a copy of.
I didn't write.
I, well, I sort of did.
You do, so this one says Exhibit A, so that was the original one, right?
Aaron didn't write on his, he's.
I got no pad.
Alright, I have one.
So what?
This is the one.
Okay.
Yeah.
There's some further business, motion to adjourn.
Uh I've got to talk about your roof.
Oh.
Alright, thank you.
So I met with uh Zatberg from Berth Roofing uh Sunday, uh we were kind of looked over the roof. What the major problem is, is the fact that that roof originally was a corrugated metal roof. And when Roof Systems of Maine put the rubber roofing on it, they put. Skid stack, which is pretty much like an outdoor sheet rock, over the corrugated steel, and then laid the rubber roof, and what's happening was the metal roofing is. The metal roofing is flexing and moving, and it's driving all of the screws up through the rubber. There is no way to solve that problem without tearing the roof completely off. And replywood and taking the metal off, putting plywood down, and then putting in a rubber roof. He's working on coming up with a price. I can tell you right now, it's probably gonna be very steep, um and my thought process behind that would be. Obviously, it's probably not gonna be anything that we're gonna be able to afford right out of pocket. And we can discuss with him, you know, something that may be a temporary fix of the bad spots, but what happens is. Once you get water underneath that rubber roofing, it breaks down the adhesive on that, and that's why you start to see it popping up everywhere. My thought was, was kind of following in the footsteps of the alumni that built the place, um they went out, they raised the funds for it. You know, because at some point, we are gonna have to do that, you know, if you can just keep putting, sticking a rubber patch here, rubber patch there. And that building is gonna be preserved, so, you know, maybe speaking, we speak with the alumni and some townspeople and see about getting a fundraiser going. You know, possibly look into some grants to. Help provide some of the money for that.
Right, is there, I mean, you said you you asked him about, like, there has to be something temporary, the temporary nature that we could do to to.
There there would be, there would be temporary, but it is only temporary, it may last. A month, it may last a year.
I think we should just get Steve and Jimmy a.
Can't block seal.
They can propel off the roof.
Uh no, I I'm.
Fundraiser.
That makes sense, I I feel like.
And I don't know. The, how everything worked out with roof systems, when they, the town had them up there, whether the town said just. Do it the cheapest way possible, or do it the right way, but he said that they never should have done that over a metal roof, just for the fact that that metal roof is flexing, and it's just popping screws up, through the rubber.
When was that done, Jim?
Twenty years ago.
Twenty years?
You have to know my, by any chance?
Yeah, I remember, I remember it being done, so it was about twenty years, sounds about right.
Yeah, it might have been, oh, what happened? No, it was.
Might have been more than that.
Yeah, cause I was in, I think I was in school when they did that. And so it's been twenty five, thirty years. You know, then the cheap thing, you could rip all the rubber off, and then you put the screws back down, but they're just gonna keep doing.
Well, it seems like if if there's something we can do. Temporarily to to prolong the roof, so that we can raise some, uh come up with a plan to raise the funds, because I agree, like. Asking the town to to just donate money, so.
No, and he and he understood that, I said, you know, the town probably not gonna go to crap with money.
Right.
You know, right out of pocket, so.
Right, no, I I like that, I mean.
And he understood, and he just said, I'll get you a price on, you know, what it would be, so you guys get an idea.
We can start another committee to like a fundraising, just kidding.
I was thinking that. Elena, is it prudent to get um a second estimate at this point, or since we're just considering fundraising, or we probably should have?
I think. I think that, I don't know. Going with what they have, he knows what he's talking about, obviously, but. Just for the sake of fundraising, I guess, I think going with just that one is fine, and then when the time comes to actually do the work, then. Go through the process of. Finding different estimates, but at the same time. We kind of, I've kind of already looked around a little bit to try to find others, like we already went to Roof Systems of Maine, and we kind of.
There's a, there's a a sign on the Greenborough Road for a roofer.
Well, that's, that's a totally different animal than what your average roofer.
Yeah.
No, absolutely, no, I understand that, yeah.
Average roofer does, you know, like even the Killums, you know, they wouldn't.
Right.
Right.
Give them all something like that, I'm blank.
Elena, did you ever hear about that company, the 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 first one you talked about?
The Roof Systems of Maine.
Yeah.
But yeah, that was the one that she said they don't give best, and they just.
They gave us the price first.
And and, yeah, we didn't ever hear back, and, okay, alright.
Yeah, no.
I mean, I I think we can move forward with the a fundraising goal without having multiple.
Right.
Right, but I'm thinking in terms of of um short term fixing and some of the leaky as well.
Oh, fixing, um, yeah, I mean, like I said, we've kind of already went to the.
Okay.
Top people that are in the roofing, that kind of roofing business, um right now, so.
And then I I did plan to discuss with him, once he gives me that price, you know, if he thinks he could do something to temporarily fix it.
Okay.
You know, and a lot of those guys, they don't wanna. They don't like to do temporary fixes, because then when something happens with that temporary fix, people, some people are have to go after them for.
Right, especially if it doesn't last as long as they.
Some things like.
Or is it, is it, is highly a bigger, a bigger issue when you open it up, that.
A big issue, yeah. Yeah.
You know, it's trapped water in, or like all of that, absolutely.
I mean, if it, if he says, I don't wanna do it, but this is how you do it, I'll climb right up on there.
I was gonna say, I was gonna say, like I. We could probably put a.
A committee together.
Together, a group together that would, you know, on a, somebody where nobody's looking, we could do some temporary patches, yeah, definitely.
Yeah. The Jemberg committee.
Okay, well, thanks for that info. Anything else, not gonna assume, there we go.
I I don't.
Do, do we have any update on the EMA or?
No, because um, I mean, I just need to to check with the county as to how the process goes, did they appoint that person, or did we appoint that person?
Do we have somebody that's interested?
Yes. Yes, we do. Um so Tim said that he would be willing to step into that position, um I just need to check with the county to make sure.
It's a lovely do nothing position, so.
I just wanna, I I don't know which way that goes, because I don't ever remember appointing Ryan as the EMA director, so I don't know if the county appointed him, and then we just.
I think it comes with a human race, though, so.
Oh, yeah, it does, a big percentage.
I think it's not.
Alright. If there's nothing further, motion to adjourn.
Oh.
Second? Well, I make a motion, or I second, whichever one we have to do.
Oh, you are, I guess, okay. Any discussion, all in favor?
Yeah.
Alright, and we will turn, uh oh my gosh, six fifty, missed it.
Excellent.
Thank you all.